Session back to order. No changes to the agenda. Our 1:00 item and the press is here behind us, recording our meetings. Video recording. 1:00 in sage grouse discussion. I'm with Mount here, Watership Manager Chip Tip. Jamie's here also. Welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Chip, for the audience. Chip is from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And Jamie is the Governor of Sage Con.
Well, thank you, Chair Winters. And Commissioner Kestner, I really appreciate the opportunity. And Commissioner Shellman has another meeting. Okay. I understand. And I appreciate giving him a chance to down with you kind of short notice. After talking to Commissioner Kestner, became parent, it'd be smart to have a meeting with you all before we actually have a meeting with the general public here in town.
Absolutely.
So I appreciated that feedback. I'm certainly welcome now. You can come and visit. What I'd like to do is I gave this presentation to our Fish and Wildlife Commission last month. I guess it was still this month. And it was basically giving them an update where the rules are. So the rules that we're at now are where we landed in our last meeting in John Day here about four weeks ago. And then basically, as close as I can figure, it's about as close as we've gotten thus far to consensus among a quite actually divergent group of folks that were on Rules Advisory Committee. But it's been a good process. I believe it's been a good process. It hasn't always been smooth and easy, but I think it's gone fairly well.
So these are still draft rules?
These will be adopted by the Commission on their meeting on the 27th. And they can be amended by the Commission. So they're not permanent.
Can they, can there be changes or anything to them before the Commission sees?
Actually, because we have to, excuse me, under public meeting law, we have to post them with Secretary of State's office. We wouldn't change them until a Commission. So there's plenty of time to provide input, both written input now up until the Commission meeting, plus also input at the Commission. Just to give you a little background on how we got to and why we're here with regard to the sage grouse. Really, this is, the direction that was given to us both from the standpoint of the, there was legislation that came out of, actually Representative Bens. And it was two pieces of legislation directing us to develop mitigation or develop what would look like, what rules would look like for mitigation. And that was given to us along with the Sage Con, which was the statewide process with the multi-parties at the table that was looking at how to move forward with sage grouse, both in the context that there was potential that there could be a listing, but also in the context of rules that needed to be developed and changed by us. So what we've done is we've amended the OFFW sage grouse rules to allow some development in core areas. At this point in time, without these rules, the only avenue we have as an agency is to recommend avoiding any development in core. And then we're kind of stuck at the dead end street. The other thing that came out of this process is that we're amending the LCDC and the county rules to give force to the mitigation. And the importance of that is that one of the criteria that were listed as threats to sage grouse across the range was the lack of any regulatory certainty that the Fish and Wildlife Service could rely upon to judge whether or not they're going to be adequately protected and impacts are going to be adequate to mitigate. So this is really part of what we're doing. One is getting the state of Oregon's fish and wildlife lined up so we can address impacts and do mitigation, which we don't typically recommend now. And then the second one is to give some assurances to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who are expected to make a decision here in September whether to list birds or not. And then finally, the other thing that we came out of this, and this is more out of the global efforts that came out of Sage Con, is that the general idea is to provide an uplift across the range in Oregon of birds. We'd like to see healthier populations. Have wanted to see so for a while. And so these mitigation rules are going to be basically targeting, not only is it mitigation, but it's mitigation above and beyond the impact in order to get this general uplift across the range in Oregon. I apologize to the slides. In order to get you something to look at, I made lettering terrible. We had a Rules Advisory, we had a Rules Advisory Committee. We've had four meetings from April 3rd through June 3rd. They were scattered around the state and one in Salem, one in Ben, one in John Day, and Harney.
Harney.
Harney was, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have one, we didn't have this one in birds.
The members on, generally the members that have been on the Advisory Committee, the Nature Conservancy represented some of the conservation groups. Harney, Crook, Baker, Lake, Union Counties have been active and have provided active membership or active participation. My compliments to Lake County. We certainly welcome, Ken's been at about every one of the meetings, as well as Steve Grass, Steve from Harney County. So we've been pretty fortunate to have participation pretty consistently through, along with Baker's been pretty good in Union Counties. Crook's been there quite a bit of the time, but certainly the previous, I mentioned, have been there almost all the time. Deschutes County, of course, we're invited, but you know, Deschutes County's a busy place. They were relying on Crook.
And Mount here too.
And Mount here also. And Mount here, I think, was referring mostly to Harney, a very similar interest. The other one is Oregon Natural Desert Association, of course, conservation group with interest in sage grouse. Oregon Farm Bureau was represented. The Northwest Renewables, basically representing the power interest, energy interest at the table. Portland Otterbonne was at the table, a conservation group. And then Oregon Cattleman's Association and John O'Keefe were fortunate to have him able and willing to participate.
I had that Oregon Farm Bureau, Mary Ann, I forget her last name.
Nash.
Nash, because she was a wealth of information as we went to ranching in Oregon.
That's a very good point. Thank you. There were others at the table that weren't necessarily part of the Advisory Committee. They were technical advisors, but not necessarily the policy advisor. I need to make that clear, because the tribes sat in more from a technical standpoint, but they really weren't part of the Advisory Committee, both Confederate tribes of the Warren Springs and Burns Heights. John Jennings joined us, as I joined the LCDC rulemaking procedure. He joined our Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission rulemaking procedure. Oregon Partner Energy had a fellow on there, Jason Sierman, who came on later on in the process. And the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service was pretty diligent to at least be on the phone and visit with us. And it was fairly important to us to get some feedback as we're moving along, because although they can't be pre-decisional, they can give an idea of what's going to make and what's not.
Chip, can I add one thing?
Sure.
We also had a commissioner from LCDC and the Fish and Wildlife Commission on each of the rulemaking committees and on each other's. And so that way, we made sure that we had constant participation from the Commission level as well, since they're the ones that are ultimately be adopting or considering adoption of the rules.
And Catherine Noro, for those of you who are familiar with her, was on the LCDC Commission. I worked with her years and years ago in Deschutes County. It's actually a Deschutes County plan, a very, very well-versed county plan. So we have in place a set of rules for sage grouse management. These are administrative rules. And these rules that we have in place were adopted by the Commission, but they're based on the sage grouse plan that was developed in 2005 and then, or 2006, and then revised in 2011. And that Sage Grouse Conservation Assessment Strategy for Oregon was developed in order to address this, what we were seeing is coming down the pike with regard to declines in sage grouse populations, but also the threat of listing. Those declines are across its range less wide. So we've already got in place administrative rules that took out the key constituent pieces of the plan itself and put it in administrative rule. Now, the plan is basically an administrative rule just by reference, by the way administrative rule law works. But the key points I'll explain a little bit that are already existing, that are incorporated here, and we've also reiterated in the rules that we're bringing to the Commission. So the existing rules have three component parts that are fairly important. First is a population management goal. And that's to look at 30,000 birds over the next five years across the range of sage grouse habitats.
Next five years of next year.
I'm sorry, 50 years. Second one.
So when was the last time in these seven county grid that that population?
Well, we've been estimating, we do yearly assessments and estimates on the populations. And I've, I've got a graph here. I'll show you where we're at, since those came from the 2011 time period, that 30,000, I'll explain a little better in a minute. The other goal is habitat management goal, and that is, is that across the historic sage grouse areas of Oregon that are still have sage grouse. Now, keep in mind that Columbia Plateau and a bunch of that country had sage grouse, but that's kind of taken off the table anymore, because it's certainly been an intensive ag land. But to maintain 70% of that sage grouse range in mature standards sage grouse. Those are what sage grouse like. That's where we find the best populations. So it's based in science. The other 30%, and actually Commissioner Kestner and I had this discussion, it's variable things, like it's been ag conversions to ag land planted crops and things like that. Some of it is just a reality interspersed amongst that even in natural conditions, it isn't sage grouse. It may be something like rock scabs and things like that that may be part of that. And so it's a goal for us, because we know it has a relevance with regard to the sage grouse across the range and their health. And then finally, probably the key piece that really got it, has probably raised the bigger issue across the state is, we've really addressed sage grouse conservation from a different type of approach than we typically have with our other wildlife species. And that is, is that we've really looked at the populations, really defined where the habitat is. They're very, very particular species with regard to habitat. They're not generalists. They're very specific to sage grouse. They're very specific to certain age classes sage grouse. So they're very, very obligate to pretty good sage grouse conditions and environments. So what we did, though, is we took a look at where our populations are, where all the lecks are that we've been monitoring. And we basically were charged with identifying, protecting areas across the state within sage grouse environments that would protect 90% of the population. So, and the goal there was the smallest amount of area in order to achieve that 90% protection. So keep in mind, when we're talking about the core areas that we identified to protect 90% of the population, it could have been a much larger map, because the lesser quality habitat takes more area than the higher quality. And then finally, from, those are the existing rules. The new rules we're putting forth are for the actual mitigation for impacts in sage grouse habitat. So that's what we'll be taking to the Commission that's very new.
And since that we have, and this would apply to non-federal lands?
It applies to non-federal. There's a big discussion regarding how they will apply to state lands. We're anticipating with the state lands, we would get some sort of agreements, a memorandum agreement, that they will follow the mitigation rules on state lands. We would still use this as guidance for our staff when they're making comments and basically providing input on federal land, projects on federal lands. So the other piece of this that I probably haven't articulated well is, just as important as what we lay out for rules for the general, there are also rules for our own staff to be following as they're making recommendations, so that they're not just going off and deciding something that's inconsistent with what the expectations of the general populace are. So Commissioner Winters, if you look, you asked about whether the population, this is pretty much how we came to the 30,000 birds. If you look, the straight yellow line is about that 30,000 bird level. If you look at since 1980, when we started doing a better job of picking up some of these lecks and tracking the populations, it kind of oscillated around that 30,000. So, and it has done so through the time. But as you can see, it also, as of recent times, we've seen some drops. And there's a few populations, fortunately, none of them down here, that we're worried about, but in other locales, that are a bit of a concern of seeing some decline. But it was an attempt not to go for the peak that was up there in the early 1990s, nor for the bottom of the trough, which in like in late 2000 or late 1990s. But more try and find an area that's a balanced area that we could expect to achieve some success in matter to most populations over the long haul.
Oh, it's really interesting to see the peaks and the valleys and that they just continue to go down, it looks like there.
That's our concern at this point, yeah.
Is any of those valleys because of drought?
Let me think about '96, actually ironically, if I recall, was a fairly wet year. I think it's probably a mix of both drought and the other thing that can be problematic for upland game populations is if you get a late season winter, that can be real problematic. And I'm not sure how good a re-nester sage grouse are.
Well, and you'll probably hear a lot of discussion, but by the graph, that's interesting. I'm wondering, given we're looking at land use and all these other things, how much of those declines are from land use? And why are we into land uses? If that's not the cause of the declining populations?
So, very briefly on that, so there's a couple factors going on that go along with the threats. It's not just one thing. You're absolutely right. One of the big issues is fires. In recent times, we've seen some fairly devastating fires across. That's something that's being addressed. We don't have regulatory authority or actually management authority over it. That's something that's being addressed in the more global sage grouse action plan that's being developed with our partners at the state level. The other thing is with regard to some of those areas, the drops, I'll be very honest, with Baker County, they've seen a very substantial drop in population over, since 2000 and well, since the late 90s, it's been a 70% drop in the population. And that probably has a bearing on what that whole graph did, because that was also a fairly robust population.
And you're touching on what would be interesting, as we said, if you're representing Lake County, if we knew what our population went up and down compared to everybody's, we're in the same pocket. And because of, everybody here is in this field, just want to shoot us to the wall, while these rules regulation coming down throw this all in the same pot. And even here in Eastern Oregon, if the counties in Lake County were to include a graph.
Right. I'll have to talk to Foz and have him pencil it out for me. The other thing, going back to explain 70/30 habitat ratio goal again, as I talked about preserving 70% mature stands, it basically approximated the current stand, you know, current bird conditions out there with regard to undisturbed sage grouse lands in the ratio of disturbed areas. It is science-based, based on what we've seen where we've had most productive populations. There's a corollary there. And then basically-
So I was going to wait, just a little, just come up to my time, because I really, and I know I'm probably going to play off of, as I'm reading the proposed rules and everything. We have no control of fire. Right. So does fire consider disturbed ground?
Does fire consider disturbed ground? It can. And let me explain that a little better.
And that's purely, huh? And that's purely, because when you start seeing 70% have state sage grouse, and we can have fire coming through.
So, so let's back, but this is a goal. So this isn't a standard by which any county or anybody has to live by. This is a goal for trying to achieve a habitat condition that we know would be good for birds. It's nothing that has any regulatory application to it. It's basically sets a goalpost we're trying to achieve, but we're not obliged or obliging any entities to achieve it. It's basic.
And you get my spiel. I appreciate that, but we are a reporting agency. And once it's written, and you guys write, which is good science, and we have to regulate, which is lacking my experience.
I understand. We do have, basically, from what, from what the counties can regulate with regard, it's more not to begin with.
Which is human?
Pardon? Human, I'm sorry.
So if it's a human-caused fire, would that call it?
No. No, we're not. You know, fire is one of the threats, but we're looking, as far as a threat, it's not a, it's not a human-related or human-caused. I mean, look at all the fires out there in the sage grouse, like 99% of them.
It's hard to take you on.
No, no, no. It's good. That's why I'm here, is to try and front-load some of the questions that may come up. I appreciate it. So this is, this is a little explanation of the quarry approach to conservation. What we originally tried to pursue was to identify those areas that are the most productive areas based on leck attendance and leck abundance, how many lecks there are and how often they're frequented. And basically identify those areas to try and establish, we were asked very early in the process to identify where's good places to send development, where's places to keep them out of. So when we did that, this is what we got. But it, as you all know, poor habitat raised a major issue when particularly wind power came to the scene and started looking at the core areas, where also some windy areas. So these red areas are basically the core areas we've identified. The blue areas are what we refer to low-density habitats. Those are also very important habitats, those low-density habitats, for a couple reasons. One is very often those core areas, those birds spill out of the quarry into the low-density, very often those low-density habitats contain winter range, winter habitats for them. And certainly, one of the other issues with regard to sage grouse is fragmentation of their habitat. So those blue areas, if you really look at them, they kind of link those core areas together, so there is potential movement and there is habitat between those core areas that's provided in those low-density habitats. The rest of the, the rest of the area, particularly the yellow area here still is a fair amount of sage grouse. We refer to those as the general habitat areas. You can see there's very few places where there are lecks in that area, but there are a few that are out there, but it is still potential sage grouse habitat.
So the yellow star says pending, but the definition of pending?
Pending leck is, what we've got is an array, getting out and counting every leck every year is pretty much almost inconceivable. We really ramped it up this year, but we had the blessing of a very dry winter, so that folks could get out on the, out onto the flyas and places where they needed to go and count sage grouse. So pending is one of those that has not been looked at recently. We know it's a leck site. We know we have some historical record of it. We had not necessarily gone out and counted it recently.
So, and how accurate are your numbers of population?
We think they're pretty accurate, because we do two things with regard to our population estimates. The first thing we do is we go out and basically do the leck, we do three things, I'm sorry. We do the leck counts. So we have an idea how many breeding animals, breeding birds are out there, counted by the males, because those are the ones that are indicators. The second thing we do is after the hatch, we go out and we do brood counts. And the brood counts aren't necessarily tied into those lecks. Those brood counts are tied to traditional routes, because at the time we do the brood counts, we can actually drive into that country and get to those birds, which we may not have been able to do for leck counts, because leck counting occurs within April, it's very early in the spring, whereas brood counts we're doing later when things have dried out and are much more accessible. The third thing that we do is we hunt sage grouse in Oregon under a very, very regulated process. So it's a limited entry, which most states have never done that. And it's two birds per hunter on a limited entry. And the number of tags that are issued are taken into account based on what the condition of the population is from the previous year and what the condition and the environment is. So there have been years where some of those big fires in the trout creeks and stuff, we've had to curtail. So those data that we get from the wings that have to be submitted by every hunter that harvests a bird tells us a lot about what's going on with those populations. So for such a small bird, it's probably the most monitored upland game bird population in the United States. So getting on to what's new and the, and the rules that we're taking to the Commission. First thing is, we hadn't had any definitions in the administrative rules, but because we're moving forward with some new terms, and we're moving forward in mitigation, we needed to come up with some definitions. So I'll go through some of those definitions in a minute. The other thing is, we had some edits. People, when we passed out the rules, I had started with the original rules with the intent of adding new rules. I had a committee of editors, so I got back edits to my original rules, which is fine, cleaned them up. We didn't want to get into changing those rules as they related to the population or the habitat or the quarry approach, because if we did that, we'd have to open up the whole plan, and we didn't think we had the time to get through this if we did that at this point. Excuse me. We also added some sub-goals to the habitat section to kind of clarify where we're coming from and why we're doing what we're doing. And then we actually came up with the two mitigation policies on how to approach mitigation for impacts in sage grouse habitat, for development impacts. And then finally, a very brief blurb with regard to how to relate these new rules to our existing mitigation rules. If you're familiar, we have a mitigation rule in place that basically directs our staff and gives us advisory direction to the counties and others on how to make recommendations for mitigation. So in the definition sections, things we had to define, because we're looking at a broader public looking at this, plus we're coming up with some new terms because of new issues, one of the things we had is areas of high population richness. Now, core area is the most productive, but not all core areas equal. There are some real hotspots around the state where we have very, very reliable leck attendance, very high leck attendance, and very high leck density. So we wanted to identify those areas that had a little extra avoidance as best we can to those areas. Core areas, we added a definition, although they're explained in the plan, we added it as a definition, so it was clear how we develop core areas. And those are basically areas of high and moderately high leck densities, and those habitats are supported, and then the other associated habitat.
Quick question.
Yeah.
In some areas, you mentioned it's very high rich and consistent. Have you looked at one of the elements of that that separates those areas from others?
Can you hold that thought? Because I have, I think at the end of this, I've got some extra slides, and we can look at some of those, and maybe, maybe we can talk about that. Because as you know, sage grouse habitat is an imperfect science, but there are some attributes of those places that have some of the riches that I think, I think you can start visualizing what those are. Development action actually is a term that we derived from our existing mitigation policy that refers to developments that may impact in a negative way sage grouse habitat. We had to identify direct and indirect impacts. A direct impact are those that are immediate and proximal in time to what goes on with regard to a development activity. And it plays into, when we start identifying thresholds for impacts, the studies that have been done thus far to talk about sage grouse, how much impact development they can tolerate, looked at about 3% the populations just start dying. And it was based on a look back in time, so that the author basically looked at what was on the ground that could identify from aerial photos, and how much of the footprint was, was there in relation to what the populations have done. So we really need to be able to identify what direct impact is.
How is this a word, impact that has both a positive and a negative connotation?
Yes.
The fear of being used as a negative connotation?
Yes, for the most part it is. We talked about, yeah. I'll go ahead and talk about indirect impact. Indirect impact, one of the things we know about sage grouse is, is that albeit the footprint of something going in there, we know from the studies that looked at the back looker what the population did, it really wasn't that small area that affected the birds. It was both the activities associated with that development was, whether it was somebody building a power line, plus the power line itself and its impact, how it influenced how birds use their habitats. So indirect impacts are much broader than indirect impacts. The importance here is, when we talk about direct impacts, we're talking about the footprint of a project, because it plays into one aspect, which is the backdrop of how much is tolerable amount of impact over the span of time in sage grouse habitat. The second one is, how much has to be mitigated? So the mitigation will be tied to the indirect impact. So the extent of the impacts that are both, not only the proximal impacts, but also those that are indirect and carry out both in distance and in time. And then one of the things we identified was how to go about mitigating sage grouse. So we talked about functionality. Functionality is the ability of that habitat to support the life history needs of those birds in, in terms of a certain number of birds. So it's basically, it was a way for us to keep a bookkeeping, because when we look into the future with mitigation banks and things like that, the function in the habitat, functionality is basically, how well does it do in terms of supporting a population? But it's pretty much reflected on numbers of birds and numbers of lecks. Low-density areas, I mentioned before, those are those areas that are adjacent to quarry areas, in between quarry- before, those are those areas that are adjacent core areas, in between core areas, that are still very important for sage grouse biology. General habitat again is sagebrush environments out there that probably once had sage grouse, but for one reason or another currently don't have them. And then priority areas for conservation. We needed to borrow this term, it came out of SageCon and out of, where it plays in is, priority areas of conservation in Oregon, I'll explain it later, are actually our core areas. But they gave them names in the BLM, and so we carried that forward.
Good to hear that one, Michelle.
Yeah.
And so I was out here with John Jennings, and we talked about the LCDC rule, and John went through those definitions. The definitions are the same in each of the rules, and that's really important, and it was done intentionally, because the rules need to work together as a companion. And so, you know, a lot of the definitions, yeah, and there was more conversation about different definitions, depending on which work group you were in, but ultimately they're, they're all the same in each rule.
And, you know, after we had those RAC meetings, John and I were spending a day or two together trying to clean that stuff up, so we did work pretty hard. So, one of the things I mentioned before, we added new subgoals. These are to reiterate, and again, these aren't necessarily the policy, these are the goals. So there is a difference in goals and what we get down to later when we start stating policies, and the policies are what need to be implemented. But the goals are, you know, trying to avoid developments in sage grouse core, low-density and other habitats. I mean, it's just a general motherhood statement. To limit the extent location of negative impacts and disturbance over time to 3% of a pack, that's a priority area conservation, which is basically our core areas, at a rate of less than 1% over a 10-year period. This is actually in rule under the LCDC. They have the better ability to enforce that, to basically implement that as a rule. This is a goal for us, because we really don't have that regulatory authority that's out of our view. And then finally, to require compensatory mitigation for direct and indirect impacts, and that compensatory mitigation should be aimed at targeting a net conservation benefit to the birds overall across this range. So, one of the things that we built into getting into the actual mitigation section, this is the new section that we're going to be taking to the commission, is how to go about approaching mitigation. So the first goal, as I talked about, that we try and avoid developments in core and low-density habitats. So we needed to come up with some standards that basically played out both, we're kind of stuck in between, because we had to come up with standards that played into the LCDC rule and how LCDCs work with counties. So it had to have relevance to the counties, but we also needed to have relevance and ability when we're consulting with state agencies that may be permitting different types of activities, but also in terms of providing our input to the feds. So-
So what you're saying is, the key thing is avoided on any habitat.
That, that's the first order of business.
Avoided.
Yeah. If we can avoid-
If we're loaded to the anything.
If we could, if there, if something could be moved to where it's not an impact, then that's the ideal situation. But, but we set it up, so there's some tests with rerelation to that avoidance, and then we recognize there may be some projects that end up in core or low-density or whatever. So we recognize that, but what we're trying to set with these rules is how the thought process and the work process would go through to get to the, to get through that to as best we can achieve the goals we set, but if we're not achieving the goals, then at least try and put some criteria on how we would approach both developments and mitigation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, one thing is, with regard to LCDC, they, they came up in defining large-scale development. Any large-scale development in sage grouse core and low-density areas or any habitat on public land, basically we would implement the mitigation here. I'll explain that hierarchy a little more in depth here in a moment. Any large-scale development in general habitat, or small-scale development or other permitted activities in any habitat, what we're asking is if they're within four miles of a lech in core, or within 3.1 miles of a lech in low-density or general, that basically, we work, ODFW works with the counties or with the other agencies, state agencies or whatever, to consult, to try and work on ways to minimize and avoid the impacts. It's a little different standard than talking about from the standpoint, what we tried to do is identify the world of all the activities that could be undertaken and permitted that would be so small scale they'd be insignificant. And as Commissioner Kessler got tired of hearing me say, it was depends. And one of the things it depended on really was the nature of the activity and the proximity, particularly to lechs.
So a question, and I've just been, I'll ask a lot of questions.
No, that's good. That's good.
You got 3.1 miles, you got four miles.
Correct.
First thing I need to say, I think, is the maps, the land are terrible, and I think the circles are way outlying. But when you're talking four or 3.4 miles of a lech, unless I'm wrong, that equals 6.2 and 8, because you're both white.
And the answer is, that's not an exclusive area to stay out of. That's under the circumstances, somebody wants to go site a gravel pit or something, are they within four miles of a lech in core habitat? We're going to sit down and talk about ways to minimize those impacts. It's not-
But it goes a full circle around the lech, so it's misleading to me in ways that whenever you go to the map, it's, it's a long way. It's not this 3.1 mile, one direction. And I, I guess, I understand what you're saying. The other concern is, is it's all-inclusive of everything within 3.1 or 4 miles. And if you look at the maps, they show this as core habitat, general habitat. They don't take into account for any of the habitat within that area that doesn't fit sage grouse, in my opinion, at all. The best example is Fitzrock Pass, it's a 3,000, 4,000 feet difference in height, and it's within three and a half miles, plus that, two miles of lech.
Right.
Should the maps, you know, I'm beating up maps, should the maps not include that in this habitat, that's not core habitat, but the maps are included. So in land use, if you go to do anything in that area, even though it's not even the sage grouse habitat, in my opinion, it fits it by the map, so it puts you through all kinds of constraints you can consider.
That's, that's where, just coming in and talking with ODFW on a banner, to look at Saint Pacific, I mean, just a threshold of, look at Oregon project.
So, so-
Well, I appreciate that, but you know what happened, the special interest groups coming in, I had a bill of suit, and if it's on the map and it says more habitat, they went-
Well, and the way we approach it today, and we would carry this forward, to give you an idea. First thing that happened was, those core areas that were mapped, we basically sat down with local implementation teams and asked folks, you know of areas that are on the edges of this core habitat that really don't fit sage grouse habitat? So that, you know, it's whether it's rocky bluffs or rocky outcrops or whatever, or whether it's basically intensively cultivated agglomeration. And basically, if they're on the fringe of core areas, we pulled them off. If they're smack dab in the middle of a core area, we didn't pull them off, because birds are probably traveling back and forth across that non-habitat. And so, that's where it comes in, my answer is it depends. So in those areas, if any non-habitat within core, if somebody's coming in to put a house in or something like that, it's a low profile, and it's not bringing in a bunch of activity, it's probably a non-issue for those birds that fly back and forth. If somebody's coming in to put a backscatter radar site in, and birds are going to be flying into it, and it's basically disrupting movement from core to core, that would be an issue. That's why we wanted the opportunity to become, to be able to sit down and say, that's not an issue. We want to, we're not trying to stifle development. What we did with regard to the four miles and the 3.1 and all those other habitats, was just to say that, you know, if we can avoid sticking a, a rock quarry on top of a lech, we really ought to do that. If we can't, so be it.
Those are definitely, that's understandable, and those kind of things. I guess, my frustration is, I look at the map and everything, and Anaros or up there, a whole subdivision is in core habitat. We have several houses there already, and there's more potential development in that, it's in core habitat. It seems like from the maps were done, is it there's places that could have been drawn around, and not. Those residents up there now, their houses are in core habitat.
Right.
And we have other examples in the Justice Valley area, and there's-
Right.
And Plush, we have.
Right. So, when we get a request for a development, the best one I have is, there was a proposal over in Mounder County, Westfall, to put a pig farm in, and a butcher plan, butcher processing plant. So my biologist and I from Ontario, we went down into Westfall, and we took a look. It was smack in the middle of core habitat. So we went down there, and I don't know if you're familiar with the old town of Westfall, but basically, it has been a feedlot for the past hundred years. It's an entire little valley in there, the wet meadow valley was not functioning as sage grouse habitat, it hadn't for a hundred years. So, so basically, we took a look at that, they wanted to put a slaughterhouse up on the sagebrush bench, which we believed probably in cold and bad winters would have probably had some sage grouse used to that bench. So our recommendation to them was, you know, if you could move the slaughterhouse down on the bottom, then it wouldn't disrupt those sage grouse that may be moving there in the winter. Otherwise, this may be in core, but it's not functioning as sage grouse habitat, and your proposed project really isn't going to have an impact on sage grouse. So from that standpoint, that's how we view those and implement those. From the standpoint of, if we were to extract that out, the problem being is that then somebody might come up in, in the foreseeable future, without any chance to even look at it, get a permitted project that albeit itself may not seem innocuous, but it basically, say, it's a power plant that sends power lines off in all directions through core, or whatever. So really what we're trying to do is, one of the things about sage grouse that we've tried, what we found is basically, and I hear what you're saying, we know we've got sage grouse coming into backyards and things like that, but what we try to do is identify those habitats, rather than to parse them out and put them out in bits and pieces to keep as intact as possible, recognizing that there are existing impacts within that core, but it's that general mapping area, that general area that's been identified that's sustaining the most productive populations.
The biggest thing, it's always been, for that part, is you just set this boundary of which any project could be an outhouse beyond my backyard, and it could be within a half mile of a lech.
Right.
But biologists say, consider, it's not a problem.
Right.
It's just a threshold to take a look.
Right.
And to make a judgment.
Right.
I do share, and I say many times over, I keep trying to put, as determined by the local ODFW, to take some of the wind out of the environment, let's have a suit, because it's within a range.
Yeah. And I appreciate that, Peter. I need to make sure that the rules address that issue. But, but one thing we've really, I'll be very honest, we struggle with this within a distance from a core. It's not a buffer. It's just a flag that says, we're doing something that's some proximity to a lech, do we talk about? It's not an exclusive buffer by any sense of imagination.
And sometimes, you need to have that language written, so that the opposing side or the judge can actually see that it is written, or what we said.
I take it, I understand where you guys want to be at the beginning, from a completely different perspective, because as we try to attract any kind of growth to these communities, try to have any kind of economic development, one more layer of government, people get discouraged through the law to be harder. We already have enough issues to try and get rid of the land use and all these things, we got another layer on there, it has to be, it gets harder and harder to even be attractive to any kind of development. I'm talking bigger than great, getting, saying, I'm talking, just getting, you know, one job here is equal to 301, just getting new residents, which are that important. So another layer of government that people have to through, they, people just don't have, they don't want.
I, I understand. And, and, you know, we're in an awkward situation, we're trying to balance between what's going on with potential listing, keeping the feds happy to try and avoid a listing, and also trying to recognize that, you know, people need economic improvements in the counties, we recognize that. So we're stuck in the middle of trying to strike this balance. I will say though, that I am worried if they list them, and I'm worried because, you know, ironically, when you look across the landscape, we got cows and we got sage grouse, and we've had them together for hundreds of years, but my suspicion is, the easiest thing to regulate, if they're listed, is going to be BLM grazing. And I worry about that.
Well, as I go through all this, from the ODFW side, it's only talked about humans, it's a negative impact. There's no talk about where humans get into this in a positive way. I mean, everything in there is talking about human pain problems. Part of population growth, across which our wealth's grown, it has to be paid places for people. I'm just for my family, it's all negative talk about, we're here. There's going to be a need for development, there's going to be a need for infrastructure, there's going to be a need for, for power lines to roads to whatever. Everything we're doing is not taking the human equation into any, any part of it, other than the negative impact. What is there in there for protection of humans if our growth, we're sitting here with infrastructure that was new 70 years ago? So, then that's just how my family, yes, talking, it's all talking negative about humans.
I'll put a different little twist to it, I agree, because we need to also, and a lot of many times, all the good things that ranchers and others are doing out there need to be interjected somehow.
Exactly.
But to me, it's why elected officials and PDS, we got two scenarios. One is, OARs that are going to constrain us to some extent, and hope that we don't have another regulatory mechanism that not, that not constrain us, but the slam dunk is. And that's our two things, which is the worst of between us.
And I hope, I hope at the end of this process of developing these rules, I'm hoping that the answer is, is actually now we know there's some opportunities. We know there's some opportunities for one, because we've identified areas that if we can avoid them, we avoid them. If we can't avoid them, but there's important development needs to occur, this is how we approach it. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I understand, I understand about the regulation. And that, too, just on what, since I began coming along, that, that really sort of all those reasons, is that there really isn't nothing of, even example, on, use a county, or a close example, how a lot of them have really helped have a, or managed for it. And, I use us and Oregon's commissioner, who gave direction that any land that is, or those on that's in sage grouse habitat are not perceived, that, you know, the state, the private landlords, tuna, tuna, you know, sage grouse. There really is not much knowledge about, or anything, any rewards for working so hard to try to save, to save your out, or to enhance and make it better. It's sort of negative ingredients about humans, negative impact of development, negative impact of human activity, and it's proved that I'll speak for Lake County for working on that. No, I appreciate it. If I may, I would suggest that probably the appropriate place for that, that information, one is, is currently we're working on the action time for sage grouse in Oregon. That's the kind of place that actually, you wouldn't articulate that. And the second place is, we will be revising the whole plan in about a year, and there's a lot of language in the plan. What I brought to you today, and what you have in front of you are rules, administrative rules, I apologize, they're very broad. I mean, we try and get them as precise as we can, so we avoid getting litigated and whatnot. And I, the intent wasn't to make the tone of them negative towards humans, it was, sorry, it was rule language. It was, sorry if this rule language is, but I don't disagree with you. Your point's well taken. I mean, we haven't, like I said, we've had sage grouse cows together for a long, long time. And we do appreciate knowing and like John Keith says, what's good for the cows, good for sage grouse, good for the cows. So we, we understand.
As good for the forest, as good for the herd.
More present.
But yeah, this is kind of tightening things up, hopefully not just the clue, but the guide. The benefit things that we're doing out there has to be flow someplace else. And the one thing, comment I have, a lot of this, like LCD will be tracking how much disturbances. We also need a sister tracking of how much benefit we're doing too, so, you know, to get a full picture.
And actually, Chris Kessler agrees at a good point. If you'll indulge me, this is just a small part of the whole big picture. I recognize it's a painful part as an administrative rule, but it's actually a small part in the whole bigger scheme of things and bigger plan obviously.
And also, if I can add, if you remember the LCDC rules, one of the, right at the beginning of the LCDC rules, we have an introduction that had, that we, that we added to include a lot of the language that you're talking about to recognize the partnership with counties, the partnership with private landowners, the magnitude of the issue, the importance of communities on the landscape, you know, all of that. Because there wasn't a way to put it in rule language, but we wanted to set the context of the rules, you know, with the communities. And so I don't know if there's an opportunity to do an introduction to this rule in a similar way, you know, to talk about the partnership around conservation actions. It's something we hadn't talked about as a advisory committee. You know, it's quite so dry and disconnected from the whole partnership that we're all going to have to lean on in order to make this happen.
What Chip mentioned a lot of though was exactly, she pointed something out behind this modern house coming to work, is this is one piece of a very large picture going on. And Matt, he's somewhat less than fully comparable, but when you look at how it affects the bigger picture, we haven't been able to really display that larger picture.
Yeah.
For each county.
Yeah.
And that's something that we need to continue to.
And it's even bigger than the sage con and sage, you know, I mean, the plan, I mean, you hear Chip referencing that the, these rules in particular, these are amendments to existing rules.
Exactly.
Whereas the LCDC is a new rule, you know, and so even that's a little bit different.
A little bit different. It'd be easy to be able to how to manage.
Yeah.
I have a little heart, that's a lot different.
Yeah, and to have that nexus and for us to figure out, well, how do we make sure that we're keeping clear each, each department's authority.
Yeah, and that was one, one of my concerns. LCD group was going for a long time, and it was like they were trying around the action. And we had wannabe wildlife biologist at the table. And that's when we got John Jenny and Chip together to come up with something that we could do that, that worked together.
The one thing is we've talked about the good stewardship of the land and the tax of closure and everything. A hope mine would be is to, to lay this process, so that those things in the dark can possibly be used for its implications. Because it's pretty valuable.
I'll get to that at the end. I apologize if this may seem kind of a fast track and I, I hope it's.
But I'm loaded for bear.
I know that. And I know, I know we're kind of running it down the railroad tracks. Our problem is, is the master in Washington DC needs it in September.
I definitely, I definitely understand the importance of this and I know you have your commission meeting on the twenty seventh, February eighth. And we'll, we'll have some comments and some things hopefully at that time.
Good.
But I, you are going to get beat up a little bit.
That's okay. I figured. I earned it. So, and I actually appreciate the feedback and I am, I am listening, I am. But we, we can, what I was getting to is, is there are some pieces that aren't quite done. So the administrative rules haven't got into the nitty gritty. Right now in development as part of the statewide action plan is a mitigation protocol and manual. So it will identify how to go about doing that. And it sets a stage about how to like utilize it, if there are lands that could be used for mitigation, how those play into the mitigation overall. And it recognizes those different aspects of it. So I, you're actually right on. I just apologize, that's not done yet. But that's more of how to go about implementing what are these dry, dry rules. So, but, so part of, part of the mitigation and the mitigation hierarchy is something we've always in the field utilized all along. You know, the first order of mitigation is you avoid the impact. You just don't do it if you can, or do it somewhere else where it's not an impact to the resources concerned. The second one is, next level down, is if you're going to do something that's going to cause an impact, then you figure out ways to minimize the effect of that impact on the resource that you're worried about. And then finally, basically, if there's an impact, you've minimized everything you can, then the residual impacts that haven't, that still occur, mitigate those with some sort of compensatory mitigation and habitat. So to that end, we've kind of got an avoidance test and this also falls out in the LCDC rules. And that is, the first test is just don't locate a core if you can avoid it. If there's another area that provides the same value for the development that doesn't affect core habitat, go for it. We recommend that. But in order to meet that, that it goes forward in core habitat, the tests are that, one is, it's not technically feasible to locate the development outside the core based on whether it's engineering practices, regulatory standards, and we can consider cost, but cost cannot be the only consideration. Now, I could give you an example of dealing with something like this once before. And to give you an idea of something that there was no way it was going to be located outside a core is the uranium mine. Down in the drop creeks, there was proposal for a uranium mine and the two things. One is, they go where it is with site dependency. You don't go mine uranium where uranium isn't. And then, but the other thing is, the subtlety about uranium is, the processing plants have to be on geologically stable sites. It's a federal energy regulatory, et cetera, whatever the Atomic Energy Commission is now. They have to build them on absolutely stable sites. So not only could we not get them to minimize, because they had to put this, this processing plant in one particular place in core, but it also had the mine to deal with. Now, if it was such that that project went through, then, then it would have gone down to compensatory mitigation. That's the kind of thing that, you know, it's got to, if that's the only place it can be, that's the kind of place it would be. And then finally, one of the things that we really wanted to make sure was, and this is kind of Mike that thing, and actually I saw, I should have bought the newspaper, or Time Magazine is where I saw one. Along with meeting those, that test, what we want to make sure is, if we're making a commitment societally that we're going to impact sage grouse habitat and we're going to take those impacts, let's make sure that actually that project is going to provide an economic benefit to the county, or infrastructure, or public benefit that's worthwhile. And the kind of thing that I'm suggesting wouldn't be that way, have you ever heard of Cristo, the artist? We used to go string curtains across canyons and things like that. It'd be a hard argument that going and doing something like that was going to be an economic benefit or going to a county or community. So it's kind of like, let's not, let's not squander basically the resources of core on something that's frivolous. So that was for the core area. So when we're looking at low density, we recognize that we kind of had the less in the test, less in the rigor of the test. So again, if somebody comes with a project they want to put in low density habitat, we still ask, can you avoid it? Can you put it somewhere else? But if it's not technically or financially feasible to relocate it, then we understand it goes into those low density habitats. Same thing with if it's geographical dependency, i.e. that's the only place you find gold or the uranium. So, so here we are, we've gone through the exercise that testing is their way to avoid it, can't be avoided. So the next level of mitigation, we worked through with a project developer and we talked about how to minimize those impacts. So, and we're going to be talking about both minimizing the direct and the indirect impacts. So things like changing the location, changing the design of a project, change the construction and the operation, and maybe something as simple as changing the timing of those different operations or those different activities. Or it may be subtle changes to the location, such as, as I was talking about the uranium mine, we had hoped we'd get them to move the mill outside of core or away from core and that basically would have just been a shift in where it was. And unfortunately, it had the stronger geographic dependency because of regulations that came to us from somebody else.
So Chip, whenever you talk, change the location, change the design, change in construction, operation, all this, who's the go-to person? If we're going to be talking that the design has to change, it takes five years of skill level, education. So we have a development going from Lake County and she needed to work to minimize the nation, huh? Who's the go-to person? Well, the biologist doesn't have the, the skill level of changing design.
So what we're envisioning actually, and I'll give you an example where we did this. Last year, a company wanted to come in, GSRM, they're coming in at the exploratory level. So they wanted to come in, it's core habitat up there. So we worked them, with them, rather than just going smack dab in the middle core, could you drill your test wells at an angle from outside core? Could you do some of these changes to tweak this a little bit so, so that you don't go and disrupt a bunch of core habitat and only turn around and say, well, it's really not going to yield the amount of water or heat we want. So actually, what we're envisioning is, is a project proponent's going to come up front and go through the consultation process, and that we can provide that biological data and that biological information and try and make those tweaks that they can see and make as best they can when we're talking about minimizing. I, I think also, what I'm actually envisioning in terms of the, the big potential for big scale projects that are big impacts, those outfits come with their own consulting firms. And those consulting firms come and talk to us early. That's, that's very typically been my experience. They're not going to, they're not going to come in and make a big investment upfront and then.
So you have the hierarchy, local biologist becomes aware, it goes up to chain of command. So you start with local biologist.
Yeah. You know, and it's amazing how much can be resolved sometimes with FOAS, just saying, if it's not functioning as sage grouse, it's not an issue. Don't worry about it. It's a documented view.
And if I may, what we can, you can help me with this too. What we talked a lot about in the rulemaking committees, particularly the LCDC one, was making sure that at the county level, at the county counter, that you are armed with good, accurate information so that the, the, the avoidance test, so to speak, is happening with, you know, at the counter, where you can look at maps and they can go away and come back. And so the, in the LCDC rule, we included the pre-application conference. And that's, that's actually a step where, okay, so they maybe satisfy the avoidance, they sit down and at that level, the biologist is sitting together with the county and the developer, who would conceivably be the expert about, you know, what could happen or couldn't, and together figuring out exactly what the minimization might look like. So that, that gives you a little picture of how that, how that might work. So a lot of it could happen even before engaging with the biologist by giving the county good accurate information.
I just have to look good for asking point development.
I was waiting to hear that, it was.
Yeah. I have room for your frontline. Yeah. And you know what, what we do end up with is being in the right place and having development coming through with other. The bottom line is that we do appreciate sage grouse habitat being protected. Can't really do, can't. All my questions aren't against protecting how it happens, it's just the layers of your authority and I believe it will reach you.
I understand. I understand. And I think our commitment in ODFW is, it's a simple deal for FOAS to deal with, deal with at the lowest level. And the flip side is, we still have to make sure we're pretty good bits of good, that's what we're going to deal with.
I see. The government come in, Chandler, Garland, Garland wakes out a map, so when this is for the core habitat, they have FOAS, phone call, come in FOAS, FOAS to say, I don't exactly where that's at, it's about habitat, for some reason, or it is. And then they go to that.
So we get down to the third point, we've gone through minimization, done what we can to minimize the impacts that would result from the project. And the next thing then is the compensatory mitigation. And since what we needed to do, because the mitigation manuals being developed, how to go about doing exactly, still in process, we needed to come up with basically a standard, a standard to which people would be mitigating to achieve the overall ideal of the net benefits. So to that end, mitigation needs to replace the lost functionality with an increase in functionality elsewhere to support greater numbers of birds than that of the impacted habitat. I'll be very honest, we think that would be a challenge. We're not, the science of mitigating for sage grouse is less than perfect. I'm anticipating we're going to be learning as we go along and it's going to become, hopefully, I'm optimistic we'll get better at it all the time. When we're talking about going out and doing mitigation though, the increase in functionality to make up for what's lost needs to be above and beyond what the existing habitat. So many of the mitigation opportunities that you've talked about, you know, if it's abandoned ranch or foreclosed ranch land, that basically go out and mitigate, there may be some sage grouse out there, but if there's habitat work that's done on that, it's the bump above what's out there that really is mitigation credit for somebody who will be.
And this is something that we discussed amongst county, if it's the increase aspect as opposed to acre for acre.
Correct.
My thoughts is, two acres are not equal, always. You have to look at quality and functionality.
And that's, that's precisely why we did that. The other reason is, and I'll, this is leading to a good point in conversation, not all core is core. So some of it's producing a lot more birds and if our goal is to avoid them getting listing, we need to pay attention to those populations. So what we needed to do also though, in these rules, and we, we needed to articulate that is, is the mitigation could be pursued by a developer, both directly with the department and for small deals, that's probably the smartest, cheapest thing to do, particularly if we can go work to minimize the stuff. But also, we're setting the stage in the state of Oregon that there would be an in loop fee program where development can come in and basically pay for the cost of their impacts, but it still needs to be based on an assessment of what the impacts are to the functionalities, so that, that right now in that group that's working on the mitigation technical team, they're looking at a, what do we call it? I want to call it mitigation calculator or something.
Oh.
So that they can basically figure out, you know, really.
Habitat quantification tool?
Habitat quantification. And finally.
Quantification, not qualification.
Yeah, it's quantification. It is to get exactly your point, Commissioner Kessler, about not that, you know, two acres isn't equal to two acres. You have to have, take into account all these other factors.
And finally, one of the pieces of language we needed to make sure we included is, you know, the mitigation's got to be durable. I mean, it needs to be in place there, you know, to reflect the duration of that impact. So, so that we don't run anybody game once.
For example, we're doing a lot of general cutting.
Yeah.
How have our monitoring team shown actual use or not use? We don't have a good handle on that at that point.
Not yet. And, but we, you know, I'll tell you, this is one resource, we're doing a pretty intensive monitor and I think we'll be continuing at that level. And I look for us to see that. The other thing about sage grouse is, they don't necessarily stay in one place for, they do move around. We recognize that. So, so part of it's going to take some time to get through basically what the, what the response is going to be in those departments. The fourth policy that comes out is, is that we needed to put in place that, you know, when a development comes in, there's going to be a multitude of species potentially could overlay deer winter range, could overlay, not too many elk down here, but other species. What this says is basically, we have a mitigation policy that exists that directs our people on how mitigation will occur. And for what it's worth, it talks to, when you're mitigating for category one, the most important habitats, it's got to be a net increase. So it's not a new concept. But this one. But this one, this, this, this is intended to explain that when somebody comes in and they need to apply mitigation policy, and there's sage grouse and there's other species, the sage grouse trump the other species. Do you need me to go back?
It doesn't matter, I, I'm close.
So, I, I have this thing on questions, we've been asking questions all along, but I think Commissioner Kessler had one, huh? Just, I wanna touch upon a couple things. One is, is this is the, the issue that not all habitat is the same. So, part of what we're talking about in terms of going to core, this is kinda one of the pieces I look at, you know, where the counties can actually be playing a big role, is, is that, you know, we talked about the richest of the rich habitat, well, when you start thinking about mitigation costs and mitigation complexity, those richest habitats are gonna be the toughest. So, but if you're talking about, you know, if there's way to be steering people in the less richer habitats, then that mitigation cost to them is going to be much less. So, part of, part of why we set it up with regard to the standard is, yeah, there, there's, it, it's gonna be kind of an economics-driven thing. If, if they choose to impact the most significant and the most productive, there's a cost that's gonna be harder to mitigate, but if it's worth it, it's worth it. And these are some of those areas of high population richness. So, you can see on here, we've got these core areas drawn out, and, and this is the first stab, we're cleaning this up, but there are certain areas within those that are very, very, very productive. And these are the highest density lakes with the highest content of levels. And I gotta tell you, you all have produced some pretty good sage grouse habitats and populations. The Warreners are one of the more productive areas, Hart Mountain's a very productive area. And bear in mind, these aren't all private land, a lot of these are federal lands, most of them are federal lands, pretty good. But, but very productive habitats.
Well, there's one area that, you know where the picture rock pass is, up there in North Summer Lake.
Let me see if I got it on here. My, my apologies.
It's a little scrape right there. And then, you see, Ager Lake, down to the southeast.
Yep.
And then you got all that basically desert out there, oh, it's, there was a chunk along three ninety-five that's presently grass.
Uh-huh.
But there's a lot of habitat out there, I was here to view, I was out there one spring with a lot of, what, that Max, historic Max.
Yeah.
And we came up with that thing. But I'm not so sure that we paid a lot of attention, you know, because it's too busy going into the other side areas.
Right.
What if we go out there and find a mega sage grouse pack out there? How's that gonna come into play?
Well?
De-listed.
What?
De-listed, I was kidding, but.
Well, actually, you know, at that, that's, you got thirty thousand dollar, or thirty thousand dollar group. Yeah, yeah, and, and the bottom line is, is, you know, it gives us a little more comfort that as impacts are occurring, we're not in quite as much fear. But one thing, one, one thing though, I, I mentioned fragmentation, and you know, you look at some of your most robust populations down here in the Warreners, and I'm sorry, my slide got cut off, over here in Truck Creek, and some of that, you know, they're fairly close proximity, there's not a big gap. And then you start looking up in these areas, these isolated cores up here, and there's big gaps between them in terms of what we see in birds and stuff. So, the fragmentation is a big issue, basically. I think it's probably played a big role across range-wide for sage grouse in terms of a lot of those environments. But actually, Commissioner Winters, here's that picture rock pass, and you see it's not one big circle, we already carved out a fair amount of that circle that wasn't functioning with sage grouse. So, the L I Ts, the local implementation teams, probably did look at that, and probably did say, you know, these little pieces, this should have been a circle, but it had been not.
I believe if you went to three miles, it was a black comb, or you might go outside of the core, you know, I can't remember.
Well, these.
That may look a little different than the map that we.
These circles should be five miles.
It looks the same, and there needs to be revisions to it, because what Commissioner Winters was talking about, this is some revisions on that tail end part of it.
Down here.
Yeah, and so, when, when I was on the local, local invitation teams, I guess it was full of, it was a broad book, and so, you know, we obviously needed to get into it, and we tried to cover a whole county in, in, you know, an afternoon, and it just was not enough time really, but, you know, when we had a lot of people in the room and a lot of different interest groups in the room as well, so, you know, there was a hundred folks in the room, there was.
So, so are those all lots of record?
Most of them probably are, I mean, it's, it's, you know, an, an exception area, so, I mean, all the plans we talked about, you know, exception areas are gonna be considered, but, but what's mapped and what is, you know, also mapped as an exception area, there potentially is conflicts there, especially for development, when we're talking about something that we already know is not habitat.
And get familiar with that, when we talk about fish, too, when we go out through the fish park, yeah, there's that stretch of.
Oh, yeah, I'm very familiar, yeah, no, I, I, I understand.
That's all that.
One of our climbers lived in core habitat.
Yeah, yeah, one of our climbing commissioners.
And biologist has a cabinet in core habitat.
Yeah, he does, he does.
This is, this is just a map, we did some of this hotspot analysis, and, and, you know, this was twenty years ago, twenty-year average of what they were looking at, and then this is the eight-year average, and one of the things that we were talking about earlier, you were asking about the declines, if you look at, if red is the most robust population in the world, densest use, frequent use, this is that Keating Valley country, and, and Commissioner Bennett and I have talked about this, and look at what it, it used to be a little bit darker, and there used to be more birds, you know, so since, since last twenty years, we see that.
If you go back to picture rock paths, you look for your lucky, then you do it four miles and three point one miles outside of that, it goes outside of what your core habitat is, but it's still.
The three point one miles. But also drawn around that core, if you were to do that, you'd be in low density, and that's really where we were asking, that three point one is in core or low density, but we're also talking about those type of projects that would be a very small-scale project, so they're like under five acres and, you get all the descriptors, but we're not talking about a great big project, and really what we're talking about is, so if somebody tried to, wanted to site something, um, within a mile of this, we'd be asking, well, can you move it out a mile? Or we'd be asking, you know, since it's a lake, can you void your construction during April when, where we've got birds on the site, things like, it's not meant to be so owners, really, what was, what, what was happening is, we were looking at what types of activities can we just ignore that are gonna occur, that are not gonna be an impact? And unfortunately, it kept coming back on me that, well, it depends.
And, and I guess, just to clarify, the glasses that I'm looking through whenever looking at all this, is trying to protect the county and keep development, and, you know, all the codes that are for special interest groups to kill, I know it'd be, and so, those are the windows that I'm trying to, and look through, trying to, and to see, everything you say sounds great, and I love, I love going through this spring board, and other.
Thanks, I'm sure.
I'm sure. But then you're gonna, then you're gonna be in the federal, right?
Yeah.
So, that, that just, so you can understand, no, I, I, I understand, I do.
So, this, this map, I really appreciate it, because it's showing, you know, that area that, that we're talking about, that's east of, of Summer Lake, west of three ninety-five, and south of Christiansdale Highway, the great sandy area kinda where it's historically been lax, but there's, you know, current counts on that, so a lot of it's probably pending, if that was a classification, but, you know, when we talked to FOAS about that area during the B L M meeting that happened at the inter-agency months ago, and we said that, just point blank that, yeah, we just haven't been out there, you know, the terrain is as such that the roads aren't very passable, and things like that, but, you know, I, I don't know where a good policy would be to try to focus attention when there is potential projects, but mitigating for some of that area, to me, seems like a huge win, because there's no private property out in that area. And the way, recent, I think it was just since last week's meetings, and Ben, that, maybe it was a map that I saw, but that there are potentially, you know, wild, wild horses have an area out there that, that might be in conflict with trying to actually.
I'm gonna be going to my line.
No, I know, but that's why.
Fair horses.
Most of the study is wild horses, but they're fair.
Fair horses, so, layman's turn, maybe, that's why.
Right.
But anyways, I don't know, I think that, you know, we need to kind of hammer that out, because potentially, I love seeing, you know, if we could focus and bring back the populations in those areas that were historically had some, it'd be wonderful to me, because then private property, you know, if it's twenty-five percent private property owners have, you know, some of this, you know, coral events, the habitat, you know, if we can allow them still to have their development opportunity, or should move back on the federal in those protections, you know, that are already existent in that range as well, it'd seem like a huge win.
I saw something this morning about a discussion yesterday about the lags, where Caroline out to, that's an answer, something, or to irrigation, something like that, when you mentioned, if it's close to a lake, then raptors will be, I came up with two solutions for raptors on one power pole. One is another two-legged crab. The other one was just a bunch of spiked males, so it can't land.
Yeah, well, you know, you remember how much effort was put into transmission lines and keeping birds off because they used to electrocute them, you know, and I was, I'm not experienced in that.
So.
So, I was.
I have a whole bunch of question suggestions when we get to it.
Sure, I, I just wanted to, if I can indulge you for one quick minute. Commissioner Kessler, you asked about what makes really good habitat. I'm pretty sure this is Truck Creek, which has been some of the most productive habitat. And when you talk about mitigating, what, you know, when I step back and start looking at this as a biologist, and I start thinking through, you know, what is making it such functional habitat? One is, is that, you know, you've got some slope there, frankly, in the spring, remember in April, there may be snow, so there's gonna be some of those areas that, you know, if they're windswept enough, that they open up some areas where they could come in, that's likely established. You've got really good-conditioned sage brush there. You've got, not only is the sage brush a fairly mature stand, but you've also got some herbaceous plants in there that are fairly important for particularly younger-age classes. And albeit, they're not birds of the aspen, they don't particularly use aspen, the aspen still must just walk. And so, I think if we start looking at what are those most productive habitats, they're gonna be those that are juxtaposed with features like that, both, and, and the hard ones for us to get to are the elevation and slopes and things like that, that really are probably very subtle to us, but very important to the birds. But we do know that certainly with regard to condition of sage brush, condition of understory, and, and proximity to water is very important. Another area that's fairly productive, you can see, albeit there's little pockets in here, this certainly isn't sage brush, right down here on the bottom, it's surrounded by some very good habitat. Again, this is just to give you an idea what we talk about when we're trying to achieve that goal of seventy percent. These are class four and five sage brush. This, this is very productive sage grouse habitat, if you look at it, to see there was actually enough down there. This is where we start getting into the marginal stuff. Actually, that looks like pretty good range condition to me, I mean, when I start looking at any mammals and grazing, but the sage brush is pretty thin. And then this is typical of what we have, so a lot of that country actually we think about, we start going over Christiansdale and that. Okay. And then that's done.
Now, on this scene right there, if we, if I did to minor pockets here in their junk position, and then make, and hope again, better herbaceous grass, would that be a benefit? Curious.
You know, I think, I think, I think if it has the potential to actually grow herbaceous stuff, I don't think it, you know, it's not that, it's not that impacts don't occur and haven't occurred to sage grouse over the years, I think it, I think what we're struggling with this day and time is, is that we're seeing impacts across a project, across, and you, and, and particularly you go to Wyoming, and look at oil and gas development, coal development, and seed of that, and stuff like that. And, and then in Oregon, you know, we've seen changes, there was much more active conversion going on with regard to sage brush environments in the past, with the, trying to put them into grass, and things like that, we haven't seen much of that in recent years, but we can still go out and identify those areas in the B L M projects in the past, though, those contributed some of FOAS' habitat. The, the other, the other things that, by, by all means, fire is a big, big concern.
Especially role evaluation.
Yeah.
And gegrass.
Yeah. And, and that's the other big concern is what we've seen in a lot, and partially where I was going about whether you could actually get herbaceous understory in here to come in and replace it, really has to do with what the seed source was gonna come in, because the, the other thing that's a big problem with fires is the basis, because those are nowhere near as productive in terms of forage resources for birds, you know, Medusa head and cheap grass and whatnot. Also very problematic in the fire regime, in that they create a much worse fire condition overall in the long run. So, the most resilient of our sage brush stands are those that are still fairly, you know, structurally an older age class, and have understories that are basically made of vegetation, because typically, you, in a much different type of fire regimes for that stuff, you get to that cheap grass.
The one thing that you have to mention, I'm not a biologist, but water is life.
Yes.
How water do not know either.
And that, and that one slide I was showing with regard to the aspen, that was one of the things that we're saying is, is I think we found that, you know, there's gotta be water, you're absolutely right.
I think there's opportunity for, for the O F W, others to partner up with B L M, partner up with private land, infrastructure community, enhance the water. And, and that, that, I've worked on all this, I know, there's so many different things, but it is dry, like you say, but there is nothing in there that's, that's, or in goals that we will work with, and through the, through this, to enhance the water. And there should be at least some goals, and I have some suggestions on that, and that's one I'm talking about, and that, that being the cooperation with, with the F W to be having enhanced the water, which is important, avoid poor habitat, but, um, other, you know, and, and I know, I'm not gonna tell you, but, but under goals, I would like to see something, if there's anything that you can put in there, or you can have put in there, and it's on predation. There is nothing through here talks about predation or anything to help enhance the number of birds. Everything we're talking about is what humans are doing to the habitat, and that, that's like putting all the blame on humans. And I, I believe that there's opportunities here to show that we can enhance the number of birds by humans being a part of that, through predation, trying to control predation, enhance the habitat, through the longer cooperation with other agencies and landings. I just think that that'd be really good. Another goal would be is, that we've already talked about, is the value of good stewardship. Counties, the mission, mining departments that I'd like to enhance, from the few bird qualification that's going on, to preserving of, of proposed properties, whatever, there should be some value, a goal for that, a value of that to be worth something, especially to private landers. If they are lucky enough to get money to help them in those two, they do some juvenile removal, and they get an opportunity to maybe have some development there, then have to through all another mitigation process, what they've already worked on with properties, to enhance it. There should be some value to, to, um, and I, at least acknowledge that through this I think would be great. So, those are sort of some of the goals that would be nice to have in there, just, and that puts a little bit different twist, it's a positive. Just, and that puts a little bit different twist, it's a positive term on what we're really trying to do, we don't want to just do it. But at the same time, we'll show them that we're going to be trying to promote our population up, not just hammer on the humans because they want to develop. That's all that I'm trying to look for, that's good.
I'm taking notes, I wanna make sure I got all three, because I wrote down just two. So addressing predation and partnerships with private landowners and counties for conservation actions. What was the third one?
Um, well, I don't know it really though, it's the value of being a good steward.
Oh, that's right.
And then the reverbing and landings and different things, you know, about why is that? As I read through these, Chip, and I try to, and we've talked with the state of it and met with others, we're supposed to somehow marry each other in the best they can with the OARs and everybody's. The one thing that really concerns me is on the OAR, farm use is exempt and it's spelled out in it. Yours doesn't say anything about farm use in it.
The reason is because we have no regulatory authority over farm use. So then basically, if you, if you look at how you even get to these ODFW rules, first they gotta go through LCDC and your rules. And if you all, the county has determined it's a farm use, it doesn't even make it tar screen.
Okay, so you, LCDC rules accounts that.
LCDC rules, yeah, the only way you can get that, you know, the reality of the way you get to the ODFW rules for county permitted activities is through the LCD rules and your, and whatever rule revisions you do to meet those rules. So, and you bring up a good point, because I had a lot of input from folks wanting us to put, on the other side of the coin, I was asked by the Fish and Wildlife Service why we didn't put it into rule, that goal of a 3% cap. And my explanation is, is we have no regulatory authority to regulate development at a 3% cap. That's an LCDC thing. So that, that's why we just put it as a goal and address it as a goal.
And I want to be clear, as I go through, of what I heard from you, that the way that you see it, under the definition of disturbance, fire, is not considered disturbance.
No, these, fire is considered disturbance if you were to go to the statewide action plan and you were looking at basically, what are some of the factors affecting or disturbing habitat? They would talk about fire. What we were charged with in order to develop these rules is, and I apologize, but it's a human caused disturbance. That's really what we were charged with you. And I, I hear what you're saying about it's not a positive thing.
Well, the, the thing of it is, is when we go through your rules and it says, Lake VBLM district will be 72% sagebrush and 28% disturbed habitat. And a fire comes through, what, if I read that, what does that really mean? Because if you're gonna lose part of that 72%.
Potentially, that's correct. But remember, what we put in there is a goal, for everybody to strive for, in terms of as best we can, we'd like to see 70% mature sagebrush. If a fire comes through and it gets reduced, that's outside of our control. It was a goal, it's not something we can regulate or change.
But I think we regulate to it, but there is a limit to LCDC.
Well, let me, let me walk through it, we tried to walk through the example, and, you know, you guys can help me with this. So I think the way that it would work is if, for example, a fire comes through and, and takes out, you know, takes out some habitat, and a developer comes in to the counter and says, I wanna, I wanna propose this development in this area where, you know, a fire was disturbed. Well, the first thing that would happen is, is this development meet large scale, is it in core? You know, so regardless of what happened with fire, those two things need to be met, or is it proximity to a lake, again, regardless of fire? If any of those things are met, then it's a call to FAS, and FAS would say, oh, you know, it's, it's, it hasn't been functioning as habitat. Um, and there are, a fire came through, so it's fine. Or it had been functioning as high quality habitat, and a fire came through, so let's take a closer look. Uh, because it may be that there's some thing that needs to happen here in this period of time to allow this ground to recover. And we don't know what that is yet, and so we need to look at that. So that's my understanding of how that, and how they start to work together around disturbed ground like that, so.
And the other aspect of that is, is that, you know, fire through core, what's still important though, is all the surrounding core around that burned area. And, and I can't emphasize enough that we really, the reason we identified the cores, that is the most productive habitats. And although we recognize there's gonna be hits to different pieces of that habitat, it, it's habitat in a landscape context. I mean, that's the reason those, those blobs are five miles in circles, and they're pieced together, put together that habitat, to identify. You know, if we keep fragmenting those habitats with disturbance that are gonna cause birds not to use them or not to go through them, that's, I think, probably one of the things that, well, certainly one of the things that identified is the impacts across the range of the sagebrushes. So, the short answer, I apologize, Jamie actually gave you a very good, very accurate answer, is that if there's a burn on the edge of core and somebody comes in and wants to develop, and it wasn't functioning, no big deal. If a burn runs smack in the middle of core, and somebody wants to come in and put a new big tower plant or something with towers and everything, you're probably still gonna have a bearing on that core habitat, even if it doesn't have sagebrush on it at the moment.
There's more to it than about that, the goal of 70 to 38 and whatever the limit is. We also have a measured goal of 1% in the 10 years. If we have a fire that took out 10%, and then we have a project someplace not related there, but within a pack of land that we said, well, we can do something for 1% in a 10-year period. Then the environmental would come in and say, you've already lost your goal, and so you add to it about that 1%. That's my concern, is the language, the intent, needs to be written. If it's not written, it doesn't exist.
And, pardon me if I'm wrong, but I believe the LCDC rules are talking about the footprints of development, not the footprints of fire.
Yeah. I'm just covering, uh, wannabe environmentalists.
Yeah.
Doesn't work with them, probably not with them, but against them.
Well, as long as that's clear that the disturbance is development. If that's spelled out someplace, that 1% and all the disturbance is development. But when you read through these and it just says disturbance, it's not well defined. I appreciate what you just said, because that, you can be harsh on it, you can understand. But whenever it's generic, it says disturbance, it, I'd much rather it be defined as you just said, as development is considered disturbance.
That's why we tried, on the last thing, this land use develop, that keeps it within LCDC.
Yes.
Just little words to further, sometimes everything has two S's on the surface.
Well, once you, what I've been involved, that's been one of the issues, what, how everything is big, is that the definition of disturbance is what people are very concerned about.
Well, and that's why in our language, we tried to stick to develop. And use language that's been used over and over in other assessments, we talk about development, and impacts development.
And then the LCDC rule, disturbance does include natural and anthropogen, human caused activities. But it clearly states that for purposes of the rule, only disturbance from human activities will be considered. And so that's, that's for, that's what LCDC can, can regulate. But for a biologist consultation, I, they would take into account a, a natural disturbed area due to fire just in terms of what may or may not be good for the bird that could happen there, and minimization or avoidance or, yeah.
So.
So there's a new one.
And the other piece that goes along with that is, is one of the reasons we don't wanna necessarily write off burned areas is if we knew that it historically had been fairly productive core habitat, those may be areas to emphasize for more rapid revegetation and rehabilitation. I mean, those are the areas that we know had a record of being productive, so we would emphasize them. And that's really also kind of, you know, I think you can look for the near future, will we look into do mitigation and the habitat improvement closer to the core areas? Because that'll yield us the more, the more we can build those anchors in, of those more robust populations that are often.
I will say that under the Vietnam Desert Park, there's some burn areas that once it's started recovering, the county has given mine to them. They don't mind, they don't mind them at all.
Right.
Can't say that, that there's, it's not all bad, and, and firms, sometimes they recover, if you didn't on the train, it's walking. Um, so another question, and Jamie will first, but whenever you, you talk in here about re permitting and permits, that needs to be defined of what permits are. It says county permit, and, you know, on, it had re permitting on page two or three. And then on the next subpage, under policy one, A, B, and C says required county permit. And although this, I've been engaged talking, that needs to be defined as what kind of permit. Because to take me, I go into this, you know, county permit, you take the land use, to building permit, whatever. So if it's only talking about land, it's a better assignment. Re permitting would be just a use permit or whatever it is. When it just says county permit, it's misleading to the general reading.
Oh, I see.
So. General policy one.
Yeah.
That, and then on. Um, let me see, the other one is under definition is, you go to three, number three, it's talking about re permitting. I have the same question to you, LCDC on re permitting side of it. That needs to be defined, just, that, that'd be one of the things that you would hear probably, probably from the commission, it would be nice to.
Okay, defined, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that. The, the re permitting, giving example of that is, recently, we were asked to go look at the thermalite mine up on top of Great Water Pass. And, and, and so that was a re permitting of an existing operation that would expand. And that's really what we were talking about.
And maybe it's not as easily defined, but the way it reads there is all encompassing, you know.
And that's where the forbage can be used against, if it's all inclusive, when you really meant something to smaller.
Yeah, the, the other one is, maybe you can help me with suggestion, one of those things about permits. And what I struggled with, to be honest with you, is that there are some certain things that the county may permit, may be impacts. And it may not necessarily be permanent in nature, but, um.
But there's, it's in the land. So, so give, give an example, I guess, where you talked about. How do you try to follow your core, that, gonna be on the building?
And if the county were to permit some sort of temporary occupation of a site or temporary activity that could alter that habitat or could disrupt the lex and stuff. So if the county were to permit a 30-day camp, refugee camp, just as an extreme example. Yeah, out in the desert, it's sagebrush habitat. What I was trying to make sure that we covered is, at least we still talked about that.
So maybe, so maybe it's easier to, good, um, permitting, but it doesn't, for residential building.
The residential would unless it's farm dwelling. Farm dwelling are exempt, residential developments aren't.
So without re permitting?
Oh, the re permitting is, okay, the re permitting is different than the permits.
Okay, so my example was, Chip, was there in core habitat in summer light, a person decides to move in garage, you know, put a power pole for it. Do they have to resolve with ODFW and maybe mitigate that because it's in core habitat?
Not likely, what we'd like to do is talk and just make sure that the garage is stuck 100 yards from the house on top of a lake.
So what you're saying, it is, it's a private, it'd be nice to at least get a phone call about it.
Another aspect about re permitting, I have a permit to build a house, and I need to start within a year or so, and I can't quit, get there. So I go back to it, say, I've got my funding now, can't extend this, I need to re-permit it. I mean, it's kind of.
And then I really sort of struggle with that re permitting, especially where we have developments, subdivisions, I think subdivisions, right, with what happened. That, that gets possible, it sounds easy to you, but it's very frustrating for the people that are coming in, they don't have paper there, you know. Out of garage or.
So any, any land use decision that, you know, is, is a use that will potentially be, you know, have impacts to any habitat, and then therefore requires notice to adjacent agencies. ODFW is getting notified regardless if it's in big game habitat or, or sagebrush habitat or whatever. That, that knows always goes to, to an agency. And so whether it's in core or not, and maybe there's a historic lake that shows up not in, in the current maps that I produce as low density and, and core habitat, FAS might know a little bit more of the story, and he might bring it to our attention and, and, you know, give a comment and say, hey, look, if it's an administrative view, just by myself, push it to the planning commission and therefore require better condition, even the hierarchy. You know, but, but a lot of this, you know, gets resolved by, you know, the pre-application meetings, and then also, um, well, pre-application meeting, you know, essentially is the biggest step to resolving any concern that happens on the ground. Not only is preapplication something that's new for a lot of counties, because Hardy County, they didn't apply it often, but mostly other counties didn't. It's in this rule, it's in the proposed rule, but it's also meant to be in our new, I don't even know what it's, language, that there's a preapplication meeting for major development case stuff, so.
You know.
Well, if you read that, development action calls for such, but re permitting practices that can unitize or continue to impact, that will not be mitigated, because of the current standard. So whenever you're all inclusive, that, worst case scenario, you know, if somebody who's just residential could out to do some kind of mitigation, that'd create other habitats, I mean, worst case scenario. It's not intended that way, but as.
And I usually took this out of our existing mitigation rules.
And I don't wanna get on that.
I thought the example, given, say, a rock, an ag, or, you know, some, some pit that was inactive for many years, yet on the books, it was still permitted, you know, for land use, for, you know, activity again. Yet, maybe there was even a new lake set up, or, you know, that had been established, and now it was a great concern, you know, on the books, we have this whole permit that was inactive. Would there require some, some consultation at least?
You know, and I think, I think the other type of example of that is, is that, you know, you got a quarry that's permitted, now they wanna come in with a different program or something. You know, it's not, it's not, you know, it's my, my understanding.
Another scenario, we could, if I got a rock there, and it's permitted, and by night, I go back to Arkansas, I sell the property, you have to get a re-permit it, or, you know.
So I, I think that, you know, some of this, you know, new uses that are approved, and some of the old ones will have it already as a condition of approval, some of these, you know, transferable uses and stuff like that. New uses going forward, you know, in this, we're talking about re permitting, about. New uses going forward, you know, I mean, this, we're talking about re-permitting, but, but in a lot of cases, you know, conditional uses will expire. So if they do, then, then all, you know, a new application can be followed, a new process, you know, consultation, all that can be started. Some of the old ones, if they're inactive, it might be as simple as, you know, it's, it's undiscussed.
Yeah, yeah, we really don't want to be pertaining, uh, just for the fun of it.
Well, yeah, we don't.
I know.
My concern is our friends. And that's, you asked me one time, you say, well, the intent was here. If, if you know what the intent is, right, of course, that could slap you also. But a couple of years ago, I asked Bob Hooton, he said, well, ODFW intent is to do this. I said, well, I was still with the Bureau of Land Management. I said, if we go in front of the ninth circuit, are you going to be there deciding to tell the judges what the intent was? Well, no. I said, yeah, you are. So, we really need ODFW to be willing to, if we get, if, well, the county gets sued for a petition or permit or re-permit or something, and we have to, you know, test it, then we need ODFW there to explain what the intent was.
Yeah. Heck goes for that side. I mean, it basically comes through review process, and our bio, Foz has said, it's no big deal, you know, sign off on a letter because it's kind of. So, our, our problem, you know, historically, our problem has been more the case where there's been something permitted and we weren't at the table. And then we get caught between two parties. Or something was permitted that we advised something otherwise, then we get stuck.
Ground truth is the main thing, you know, with that consultation and ground truth.
Well, as we move forward and we don't want to lose, we understand that. Mr. Kessler has his history with this law, and you have my history. I was a mill right, here, I don't affect those, it's all, we're all secondary. All these years later, we can spot it out, we have the scientific tape that we're barred out. And Oregon lost all those jobs. Forests are in shape, catastrophic fires are coming. So if we work forward on this, and we put things in writing, those make a difference. Those make a difference. That history here, that report part of the national level, we have spotted out the eastern Oregon site right now, which is a sensation. I just don't think we manage for one species, quite as far as implicitly important.
The reality of that's painful to me, this Nature Species Act and what it can do to, as you mentioned, to ranchers and farming.
Yeah.
And if I got forty acres out there, I want to put a cap on it. And a lot of folks here, well, that was what's Oregon, spotted out, I mean, they can kind of quasi understand. But the appreciation of what the nature species can do to us is not, hasn't sunk in at the, as much as I think it should. And the usefulness of the 4D should give us a, kind of look at what they. This is the county and state, but actually, the audience is Fish and Wildlife Service, and that hasn't sunk in.
You know, they've got an audience too, though. They've got the litigants that are looking down their throats, you know.
Exactly.
Basically, you're gonna yay or nay whether or not they can cover the bases. So I imagine Fish and Wildlife are sitting there with all the legal counsel in there. Everybody's gonna ask very hard.
Well, they be. Our director of Fish and Wildlife for this region is the one who will be out the corner saying, Oregon has this, that's qualified as 4D, but it's not him that makes the decision, it would be the legal counter. How strong is this? Can, can we, can we, Fish and Wildlife Service, just by 4D, based on this?
So for this region, it's a she, and she is an attorney herself.
And back to the, like you, you have land management seventy-two percent, twenty-eight percent, that's our. Did you say those were objectives or goals?
Yeah.
The group has objectives. Objectives are measures to achieve.
You're right, meant, meant objectives.
So it's not a time sky gold, it's more of a concrete target?
Well, now, my apologies, I'm, I'm dealing with rules written by somebody else that you're reading now. It starts out as the goals. A part of that habitat goal is sort of achieve the following.
To achieve.
Yeah, and so it, it's a goal to achieve the objective of managing seventy-two percent.
Do that concern us? Because objective is, these are things, or targets can be.
Measurable, well, yeah, measurable.
And how significant is it to have these within, these are in the sage grouse strategy plan?
Yeah, these were, so, most of these first parts of the habitat section and the population section came out of existing rules that were extracted out of this plan. Now, the plan is set for review and revision every five years. This is two thousand and eleven, so we're looking at two thousand and sixteen revising this or reviewing update. Problem that I got into was, the more I started amending the administrative rules that were taken out of this plan, the more I was gonna get stuck with the argument I needed to redo this plan now, and I was gonna be in conflict. So I've been careful not to put too much into the, minor tweaks are one thing, but I've been careful not to put stuff into this rule that's all of a sudden gonna say you've got a contradiction. And recognizing that a lot of the points that have been brought up and brought up by not just yourselves, but others, things like talking about recognition of the contributions of agriculture, of ranching and whatnot, those are things that are in the plan. Those are things that exist, we, we've looked at, and those are things that when we'd update the plan, we would articulate that much more clearly. So I think, it, it, um, we'll, we'll talk about some of that stuff ongoing that, I also wanted to with our legal counsel.
Yeah, there's one question I have. This subject, this ain't that plan, pardon? This subject of objectives and those.
I think what we came to is, it was cleaner, even though some of that language that came out of the plan is in here, was to add to the OARs rather than trying to open up this hundred and some odd page document.
Well, that, that would, scroll down something about that would, they had opened up.
Yeah, I, I, but your point was taking about the objectives, I got corrected on one of those. And I corrected you on one of those.
Oh, he's good.
It's all that one, I can't remember which one.
He retired.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, or they can.
You do. One last thing, as what scares me, if we don't get a 4D, the full wrath of the ESA will come down. How that'll play out. But on habitat, which is different than, than population, like the world population that are increased every year about doing the thing. We got many of habitat out there. But habitat is a different beast, maybe administered and other, and especially sage grouse habitat, because it doesn't regenerate every, every season. Can you give a little gist of the difference between if we got this as a 4D, we basically live by watching it? If we did not get a 4D, how much broader of effects habitat has, would that be?
I'm not an authority on, I, I'm gonna qualify this, I'm not an authority on this. So, the reality is that, you know, the 4D gives you authorization to take. It's an authorized take and an allowable limit of take of birds. When you start talking about habitat, you're talking about another level removed as you're talking about indirectly. So, there aren't a whole bunch of legal cases with regard to take. It's prosecutorial action related to habitat damage. But I think it's more the case of a concern that if we didn't get a 4D rule and we were permitting these activities that were indirectly taking birds by taking habitat, the state in general will be open for loss. So I think in the end, somewhere along the line, we want to make sure that the 4D rule, really what that gives us is coverage from the federal government to be there to defend us regarding take and everything. I know that's not a very clear answer. If we don't have something, and I have a, I don't believe that we wouldn't get a 4D rule. At least, at least out of the point from the feedback I've gotten from John and Ganger and stuff. I, I think that's one of the strengths of where we're at with regard to having some relative consensus. So if we got listing a no 4D rule, then, then we might as well wait, we will have losses.
So do you get the 4D rule, I'm trying to get up to speed, trying to learn about it?
Is that?
Do you, are you asking for that?
No, actually, I think this 4D rule under these circumstances would be basically the state of Oregon's Land Conservation Development Commission would be going to the Fish and Wildlife Service, basically identifying, these are our administrative rules that basically provide the regulatory assurance that we are protecting as best we can and mitigating for habitat impacts in sage grouse. And so, I think it's gonna, it would be at a state level, it's not gonna be at a.
Yeah, it's, it's even bigger than that, because if you listen to Paul Henson from Fish and Wildlife Service, what he says, there are three things that contribute to our ability to get a 4D as a state. One is increase certainty about regulatory mechanisms, the rules. The second is funding commitments, which is what we're trying to work through with the legislature right now. We have part of those commitments through additional OF dollars, but we haven't settled out our legislative commitments yet because they're still in session. So that's important. The third is more certainty around conservation actions on private lands, and that's the CCAA's. And those are, you know, like, any people are signing up to those in record numbers in Oregon. So the existence of those three things really puts us in a, in one of the most strongest positions of any western state. Because we're the only state that's doing the rules, because we're the only state with, with the land use, you know, structure that we, we can put rules within, other states would have to create that. And so we have that step forward there. Um, we have more CCAA signups than other western states, from what I understand from NRCS. Um, on the funding side, we're hoping to come out in a similar, consistent with maybe what other states' investments are, but we know probably be a little short of what other states are. But the other states are putting more money at it because they don't have the, the certainty in the way that we're trying to provide. So that's, those are the three things I came here.
Funding scenario, it's extended assurance of funding for habitat enhancement, whatever, for extended period of time. And both will depend with just a every two year budget process. We don't have funding up there to say, well, year three, we don't have funding.
Well, we have that through a resolution that the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board passed in April. It was April, either April or May, that basically says that they are going to commit a ten million dollars over ten years. And so we don't know what that will look like, you know, how that will be parceled out, but that does begin to give that broader funding assurance. And so that's a piece of the funding package. The other piece, like you said, in a two-year increment, is the governor's package, which is a little over four billion dollars. I think it's four and a half, is what Richard continues to say. The other part of that are, is, are dollars that are being filed to Oregon through federal sources or other sources because of the good work that we're doing here. So the NRCS grants that we've been able to secure, that are national grants, those are, those are part of the funding package. So, those are the, so those are the three things that will help us secure a, a 4D exception in, in the event of a listing.
So everything's in place, is there, is there anything to do?
Yeah.
Yes, and, and that's really what these are, these, these are really getting us that. Jamie correctly is wrong. The other thing I'm hearing about, one of the things about these rules that you may want to count somewhat of a blessing is, some of the other states, because they don't have land use laws, instead they're making no touch areas. Basically saying nothing's gonna go on in these areas. So, take the other extreme.
Yeah, but, and the only certainty that they're able to offer, Fish and Wildlife Service, is through, those no touch areas come through an executive order, which only is good for as long as that administration is in office. So, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't give certainty that rulemaking does. So, so we're, we're, we're trying to position ourselves to be just about as good a shape as we can.
That, that helps me with the 4D and the office information. I didn't have the process.
Yeah.
So if there is a listing that's up there, is it questionable for, it does help some of this? But I gotta go back to one question, and I, you may have answered it through here. Thirty thousand per population, when was the last time Oregon had population? That's why I'm sure it was nineteen eighty?
More recent, they're more recent.
About ninety-five, two thousand.
Yeah, two thousand and five.
Okay, I, I didn't take most of the bunch, I would take it drought, I think, I think.
Hey, when you asked the question about drought, I had to think, because I got looking at ninety-six and there was a, that was a wet year.
Yeah, that was.
Big snow year.
Well, and another example, I've heard that, that snow in the spring can eliminate a quality.
Yeah, you know what I've observed over the years is, well, it's easy, Elbury Nest late into this, late, late into the year. Chucker, you're probably a chucker hunter, they're a crapshoot, because, you know, they're the ones that seem to go wild in fluctuations depending on what that wet spring, whether, when it shows up. But I still have to think it also affects. For a certain example.
You get a cold wet spring, just an hatch right before, right after, you're gonna have a loss.
I want to thank you for spending afternoon on how I'm gonna see how this is going. And, and I've got a list of things I'll take back, and I appreciate that. I'll ask a few questions about the introduction, trying to help with some of that information, goals. I'm gonna, I gotta double back through the predation section on the actual plan itself. And, you know, one of the things that we're looking at in terms of, um, issues we deal with with impact like power lines is predation. So part of it is what features. And then how to deal with some of the acknowledgement, how we go about doing it, and where we put that, regard that, good things. I will say, it will definitely come out in terms of the action plan, the education, or all that, in terms of actual.
Take me from wrong, but back to, you did not get a 4D and 4D system. You mentioned the state of Kentucky, the policy, personally, at this county level. If I came in, I guess we probably have the same. If I team in, I guess we probably have the same. Says perhaps, passing the law. I've been calling, so I can have a program to build a house and initially move that. Well, it's in such brush that, first we have to go through consultation, we have bound out to the meeting, and if we don't do that.
I don't know of any examples where the feds have gotten that far into the weeds. That's why I'm saying, I think what would happen is, it would be more the case of a third-party lawsuit, more of a third-party lawsuit. Maybe starting in accounting, over inadequacies or potential for take. But it also could be starting more as a statewide rule. Depends on how fast people wanna make the argument. And I'm not a legal authority, but I don't know of any examples where there was anybody prosecuted for take related to habitat, that's never been.
Uh, I think my mind, that leads me because I'm probably in building a house. But the, the environment would sue the county, as it prepared to sue the state. And then moving in off water, and Darwin would turn, program to build a house.
Well, I mean, so you, you carry that scenario forward, and once we all become party to the lawsuit. I mean, we're, we've just potentially given over our ability to figure, you know, we, we don't know what the outcome will be.
But it just gets many.
Yeah.
Without a 4D. Exactly. Obviously, I have Darwin as a candidate out in front of me.
Lucky Darwin.
Before we wrap up, I, I'd be very interested to hear your, get some advice from the two of you. About, you know, given the presentation you just saw from Chip and the conversation we had. What you think would be helpful for us to bring forward when we come to Lakeview for the, um, the public meeting? Yeah. So what a presentation, a presentation like this feels like it's probably too much detail for a public meeting. It probably makes sense to include some more context about the state plan, about, you know, what's happening, about the environment that we're in in terms of any ESA listing. Um, but what other, other thoughts that you have about things we should be prepared for?
It's hard for me to tell you because I, I know that it's thoughtful to have more people that do say drought, public meetings we have at 4D mission. It will seem, I don't know.
Turned out to expect.
Turned out to expect.
You'll have the planning commission there.
That's good.
We meet at six o'clock, and then the meeting starts at seven, and then you're right here, and we'll just walk downstairs. Our meeting should last a full hour or so.
Okay, okay.
I'll have, you know, probably six, six members from the planning commission.
I, I think, narrow it down to two things, which is things that I think is people who want the, the farming to be. The downed branch, maybe, how this can impact them on the DFW side, for simplicity, maybe. Or go under the quality of, but LCDC, that is, which is, I would call the farming again. So, I think we would want a number of branches and farms in the market. You know, you know.
You, you might hear come off the wall, frustration for hopeless.
We got same problem. So, so you're, you're involved with the here all the time, that. I think frustration, as you said. Developers, I don't know whether the developers could possibly get similar developers. We have some light going on here, I don't know if they will be in tune or whatever. Most of us use the culture, sort of like here right here, and tell the person's about. I don't know, the Red Rocket Dome is right here, that's a sign of the, sort of, I can't get back to Steve about the dome. You don't have questions?
My thoughts is, still starting with the OARs, building it up. Take what the big picture is, come down, and how would this play into the bigger picture? And then define what's in the OARs. And why. And if you start off what's in there, don't get bogged down in details before we ever get to the big picture. So, up from the big down to the small.
That's a real good suggestion, and I. It's a mistake for those of us that are close to.
Yeah.
To miss that.
So, that's why it's good. I didn't share this until we came up with the drafts, yes, I didn't want to share it, I have some changes for a thousand times. But that's, it's good. Like I feel good, and it's too great, and it's too close to, I don't know, to have a third party look at it with fresh eyes. Thoughts on everything?
You, you made it to question, oh, the question, you see, whenever I can't develop, I'm gonna compensate for it. Like on the, that, that probably, I would do this question, like, you're, I don't know, I did actually, I'm probably can't develop, it's sort of, it's unfaithful.
Yeah.
I've been thinking, answer the, maybe, question.
Yeah, so.
I'll give you a question, I can help.
So, so I think that your suggestion is a good one about starting there and narrowing it down. Other note I made to myself was to include in the presentation upfront, the frequently asked questions, things that we, that we, that we know. That we think are on people's minds, because we've been hearing it as we've been out in the community, and answer those upfront to the extent we can. About ag, about, you know, just kind of what's possible, those kinds of things, so we'll, so I think that's, to anticipate those questions.
Yeah, yeah. That, that, that show that you're all, already, already aware of how to respond.
Yeah. Then, um, what role do you see yourselves playing in that meeting? For example, do you see yourself standing up and saying anything, or can we refer to you that we've been before you a couple of times and that you participated?
Right.
Yeah, you know, give you an opportunity to add anything?
I'll be right behind you.
That's fine, I'm happy for that. I just wanna, you know, I just want to give you the opportunity to tell us how you'd like to be involved.
Um, I, I don't need to get up and speak, you can talk about some, like, kind of, like, board, or choice, off board, I. Perhaps like these, anything like that, you all can, you have. You never even know, you know, I might go off, I'm, I mean, something come to me, I might throw something out that you guys didn't expect. That's just, I'm being honest, that's.
Yeah, oh, and that's, that's fine, I'm.
That's weird, I, I, I don't need to speak, but I may throw a question out there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think I, I'd keep bringing back forward the comment. You know, I know you guys interviewed a lot of these questions, they're in the working groups. I mean, it comes to those, those are running the call. They're kind of really, I think, there's a lot of.
That's, that's really about it.
No, it's really helpful, I think, like, you know, like Ken was saying, I mean, it's the fresh eyes that make us all take a step back and say, oh, yeah. Because these public hearings are kind of, one of the, one of the first opportunities where we're actually coming before a, a more. Yeah, local groups, a larger, potentially larger audience, less informed because they haven't been as engaged, so.
So how are you advertising so, quite?
We got a news release coming out that talks about what the plan, or what the rules do, and you should go to the.
Examiner, once a week, we should also get it up to Desert Whisperer and the Community Greys, plus people that are already going to be examining.
So, I, I, actually, to my benefit, I've got our public information before you on that aspect.
Yeah, we can put it on, but.
Okay, that'd be great.
But if you get it to the news. There, there's some, I never mentioned earlier, whenever we were talking about the policy of the paddocks and the ranching. You know, a hundred, I don't know if that helped, OHA, or part, part of.
Actually, we asked them, they were included, two groups were included on the invite group, one was OHA. The other one was actually Oregon Finas, the sheep people, because there's a group of them, you know, that basically are pretty active. You know, to be constructive, the group, I have to admit, I, I was a little disappointed in, um, not having more representation from them.
Of course, they're all in here, so they, you know, probably do.
Yeah, and, and I'd actually made some contacts and had expected folks to be showing up, but I, I don't remember the member on the phone or John.
That is, that is, because I know they do projects and, yeah, from the audience, I think.
Yeah.
We know that OHA has been in the audience for all of the Fish and Wildlife Commission briefings on Sage Con.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're there.
But, but, yeah, but not at the.
But now I actually invited those two groups, OHA specifically and Oregon Finas, and then we actually invited the backcountry hunters and anglers. And we speculate this time.
And they've been good participants in Sage Con, they've been very active, backcountry hunters and anglers.
Almost like, actually, the audience know that when we talk about OHA, you know, not talking about Oregon Health. Or the House Association.
Yeah.
While being very.
But we're not the House.
While being very.
What were the other papers?
Sage Con's actually takes place around the season.
You said the Examiner and what were the other two, the Deserts?
Desert West Coast.
Desert West.
It's a local competition and Christmas Valley.
Yeah, thank you.
And Community Greys.
Community Greys, okay.
Down at Christmas.
All right, thanks.
Um.
I don't know that your PR people would have those.
Now, radio, you know, now, do you want to do the radio? Yeah?
Is there a community calendar that they just read, you know, things that are coming up, that made that big easy one?
Is KOR, they, 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 some, Mike Warren, with the, with. I've got connections. Again, radio stations are just locally.
Because I, I have a contact. Problem with those papers is, it's gonna be too late to put it in the papers, because they're only a month.
Oh, they're a month.
They come out at the very beginning of the month.
This is a first of the other one was.
So last week or next week.
First and fifteenth. So I probably get the desert west over the fifteenth.
You know, might just self-aware. But a lot of the people that are in Christmas Valley, they're not gonna be affected, because it's, it's not habitat, so.
No.
But, I mean, they wanna be informed, and that's the way I would like to give them sort of, I'll, I'll give them.
Have you noticed a planning commission meeting?
How do we notice for it? Well, the same way, I, I send them the same, same links for it.
I don't wanna, that was received as, as an extension of the planning question, but in the fact that it's on the same night, back to back.
And I sent it back today, so. Yeah. The opposite is, it's, I'm not a customer, it's got, party in front of the town, so.
Do you have any other questions about the public hearing itself and?
No, I don't think so.
The advice from them?
I don't think there's a room to have some.
What's real, as we, I mean, it's big. The acoustics is not the best, but.
And is there a place I can put a screen so I can do a refer, or anything?
Well, we don't have a screen down there right now.
Best thing to do is to shine it on the wall, or set it, enhance it on the wall.
Is there white wall or?
So they think he was up with this. We have a little tiny screen, but somebody used tape on it, that's not very big.
Yeah, it's awesome. So, I mean, Jip and I haven't talked through the details of what the, how the hearing would look, but at this point, I mean, we know it will contain a presentation that will, will tighten up. I imagine there'll be a Q and A time, and you guys will get a chance to add anything in that you feel like you would like to add. And then we're gonna be taking, uh, comments, you know, and recording them, so, in a public hearing fashion, and so that's the, that's kind of the format.
You know, when you, you, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, because I asked those to go through, but you might ask people, those to tell them.
Yeah.
So that you can get through your presentation.
Yeah, and, and actually, um, we're gonna run it like a public hearing, so we will take and report, but. An easy question to answer while answering, but I'm not anticipating that it gets long, conversation. Because what I'm really trying to garner is the feedback that they back.
When you take public testimony, do you have time limitation, like two minutes or minutes?
When it first, we, we don't enforce all the time, but it's three minute.
Kind of depending, probably on the to, on the number of people that come on.
Yeah, and how much we engage.
Yeah. Well, I just wanna be consistent with what people are used to.
Yeah, it's right here in our agenda, it's a three minute.
Yeah, that's our, that's it.
Oh, I had a question, is, I know this is ODFW, you know, hearing that night, but is John Jennings gonna show up? I'm all for him.
How many times?
I, I think that he is.
I know he's real busy with the next couple days for up in Burns, but.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we should.
Let's see the.
I'll follow.
Be nice, because I.
Yeah, make sure.
Certainly, I don't like talking for him, you know, like for it. Our agenda is, we can hear on twenty first, Burns on twenty second, and then Burns on twenty third, twenty fourth, and then LCDC. And I plan on being there. The difference with there.
The twenty seventh down in Salem.
And the twenty seventh in Salem. And part of the reason I'm, the truth of lending is part of the reason I'm doing these public meetings is, is, you know, public meeting rules for Oregon. Say if you're gonna make a decision that affects a locality. You need to hold at least one public hearing in that, in some community, those localities. So, we originally had planned on taking it to the commission on July tenth. But what we ran into is we hadn't made a formal notice of the Iraq meetings being public and things like that. So we needed to have some public hearings, so people could provide input, and I think we do value it and utilize it. In order to avoid somebody coming in at the last minute and saying, you need to delay, because you didn't tell them to listen to us, or hold your commission meeting in our location. So, LCDC's doing the decision-making in an affected community in Burns, so they're covered under that public meeting regulation. We had to kind of delay, because I could get the part, I tried to get our commission to come out to Sage Con.
So, the date you're gonna be here is the first of July?
That's correct.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine P M. I may, I, I should make that, I, I mean. Talking. And it's, and it's.
Very happy.
Oh, thank you, you're the one, I was relying on the, of course. If I said, call Denise, call Denise.
Okay, so there isn't, no, nothing else, there's gonna be force.
Unless you got a question for me. I'm going to, you say, go ahead and close the public meeting at three, three, seven.